It is the appointed time we have a quorum. Let's begin this session. This session is on cultural, sports and tourism. Let me welcome Mr. Kevin Young, Secretary for Culture, Sports and Tourism, and his team to attend the session. Members who'd like to speak, please press the Request to Speak button. I will first invite Secretary for Culture, Sports and Tourism to give us a briefing. Let me remind members that you should allow time for Secretary to answer your questions so that more members can raise questions. Secretary, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. I will briefly introduce our key tasks under the Culture, Creative Industry, Sports and Tourism portfolios in the current financial year. The inaugural Hong Kong Performing Arts Expo organized by the Hong Kong Arts Development Council will be held this October. The expo will include a series of programs to encourage in-depth interactions and exchanges among arts professionals from around the world and to establish a platform for negotiating partnerships and facilitating businesses. In October to November this year, Hong Kong will be the whole city for the first time to organize the Fourth Greater Bay Area Culture and Arts Festival. Over a hundred performances and exchange activities will be held in Hong Kong and other GBA cities. The government in the year 2024 and 25 will in two phases launch the Signature Performing Arts Program Scheme. The scheme will support representative and large-scale local performing arts productions as longer-running public performances to nurture world-class performing arts productions and international cultural brand that represent Hong Kong and attract audiences abroad to Hong Kong for appreciation. On promoting Chinese culture, the Leisure and Cultural Services Department earlier this month has formally established the Chinese Culture Promotion Office, which is tasked to plan programs, exchange activities and collaborative projects that promote Chinese culture and history, to advocate Chinese culture from multiple perspectives and enhance citizens' cultural confidence and sense of national identity. On creative industries, this year, CREATE Hong Kong will be restructured as the Cultural and Creative Industries Development Agency to play a more proactive and positive role to further promote the development of arts, culture and creative sectors as industries under the industry-oriented principle. The government will, within this financial year, inject about $2.9 billion and $1.4 billion into the CREATE Smart Initiative and the Film Development Fund respectively to continue driving the development of the film industry and the seven other creative sectors. We'll also cooperate with the Hong Kong Design Center and the Hong Kong Trade Development Council to implement projects for nurturing design and creative talents. For the film industry, we will launch the Film Financing Scheme for Mainland Market and the Hong Kong Europe/Asian Film Collaboration Funding Scheme. The government will, starting from this year, organize the Hong Kong Fashion Design Week annually. By coordinating publicity and content of the affiliate activities, which will enhance the synergy, our vision is to turn the Fashion Week into an Asian fashion design mega event. On sports, Hong Kong, together with Macau and Guangdong, will host the 15th National Games, the 12th National Games for persons with disabilities and the 9th National Special Olympic Games. The National Games Coordination Office is coordinating and taking forward the various preparatory work. The Games Organizing Committees have already held their respective inaugural meetings in Guangzhou on the 11th of April this year. We'll continue to maintain a close dialogue with the General Administration of Sport of China and the concerned authorities over the work arrangements to finalize them as soon as possible. The Hong Kong-China delegation will, this summer, take part in the 2024 Olympic Games and the Paralympic Games. The government will render our full support to Hong Kong athletes in scaling new heights. We have also procured the broadcasting rights for Paris Olympic Games and Paralympic Games to enable members of the public to watch both games free of charge and to cheer for the mainland and Hong Kong athletes. For the Kai-Tech Sports Park, the superstructure of the public sports ground, indoor sports center and main stadium have been substantially completed. It is expected that the sports park will be completed as scheduled by the end of this year and commissioned in the first half of 2025. Besides, we'll continue to implement the 10-year development blueprint for sports and recreation facilities to provide diversified facilities such as sports centers, sports grounds and parks by phases. On tourism, the government has earmarked a total of an additional $1.095 billion to Tourism Commission and the Hong Kong Tourism Board to continue to promote tourism development and add impetus to the economy. We will revamp the A Symphony of Lights show. The Tourism Board will, in conjunction with festivals and major events, regularly organize pyrotechnics and drone shows with different themes and designs. The first pyrotechnic show will be staged on the 1st of May to tie in with the Labor Day Golden Week holiday. And the first drone show will be staged on the 11th of May to tie in with the traditional festive celebrations such as Buddha's Birthday, Chenchao Ban Festival and Tam Kung Festival. The Tourism Board will promote new thematic travel experiences and organize different mega events anchoring seasonal and festive celebrations as well as integrating Chinese and Western arts, pop culture, wine and dine experiences, and stage different mega events. We will also promote immersive in-depth tourism activities. And we will encourage the travel trade to launch a diversified portfolio of tourism products. We'd like to thank the central government for the positive response to our proposal of enhancing the individual visit scheme in an orderly manner and expanding the scheme to Xian and Qingdao. The Tourism Board is working with airlines, travel agencies and online travel platforms to offer various packages enticing visitors from the two cities to visit Hong Kong via the scheme. The government has set up the Mega Events Coordination Group. The group sees relevant bureau departments as statutory bodies to reach out proactively to reach out proactively mega events to be staged in Hong Kong. The government has earmarked $100 million to strengthen the promotion of mega events over the next three years. Chairman, this is all for my briefing. I'd be happy to take members' questions. For this session, there are 20 members who have pressed a button to speak. The first 15 members, I'll read out their names. They are Dr. So Chen Wang, Ms. Jovi Chen, Mr. Duncan Chu, Mr. Michael Tian, Mr. Rock Chen, Mr. Benson Look, Mr. Kenneth Leng, Mr. Kenneth Fok, Mr. Sunny Ten, Mr. Scott Lern, Ms. Doreen Kong, Mr. Perry Yu, Mr. Adrian Ho, Dr. Chow Man Kong and Mr. Dennis Leng. They are the first 15 members to speak. I believe we'll be able to cover all these members. For the last five members, they are Ms. Connie Lam, Mr. Brave Chan, Mr. Vincent Chang, Mr. Robert Lee and Mr. Ma Feng Kwok. Four minutes will be given to each member, questions and answers included. I will try my best to control the time. I will try to have all the members who've pressed the button to speak to be able to speak. First, Dr. So Chen Wang, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question I put. The number is CSTB 211. I asked whether the government can let us know the themes of the mega events held in 2023 and the cost incurred. According to the government, it did not keep the themes of the mega events held in 2023 and the expenditure incurred. Well, I'm only asking for information from last year. I'm not asking you for information from 10 years ago. Well, last year, you said you will promote a mega economy. I understand that a lot of different schemes are involved. However, you aren't even keeping the expenditure involved in each mega event. Then how do you assess the direct and indirect economic benefits brought by each mega event? In the future, how are you going to assess what kind of mega events you should hold? You mentioned that the Coordination Group has earmarked $100 million for promoting the mega events to be staged in the coming three years. Well, I'm all for it. However, I'd like to know if the government has set any KPIs to assess the effectiveness of your work. My second question is about CSTB 212. We had the IT Centre for Elites for the first time for the Tokyo Olympic Games. Well, our athletes achieved very good results in the Tokyo Olympic Games. Now, for the Paris Olympic Games, will you set up a similar center to train up our athletes? Because you did not cover this part in your reply. Secretary, two questions. Chairman, on the first question, we thought Dr. So was asking us for information about the expenditure for all mega events held last year in Hong Kong. I'm only asking for information for 2023, but a lot of events were held last year. Some of them were held by the private sector, some of them by the government. Some of them were held under the government's subsidy schemes. Say, under the Mega Ace Fund, if you're asking for how many events we held and the amount of subsidy we offered, we can give you such information. But if you are asking us the themes and categories of all mega events held last year, then we might not have this information. Say, we don't know the amount or expenditure incurred for each concert held in Hong Kong. We might have misunderstood Dr. So's question. We weren't sure whether Dr. So wanted to get the information in particular about the Mega Ace Fund. If it is about the Mega Ace Fund, we'll be able to provide the relevant information. So we'll have to first learn about what kind of information in particular that Dr. So is asking for. On number 212, well, there isn't any mentioning about the setting up of center. Well, during the Tokyo Olympic Games, you set up for the first time an IT Support Center for elite athletes. I can't find the part about the center in the reply 212. Secretary, why don't you supply the supplementary information after the meeting to Dr. So? Thank you. Ms. Jovi Chen.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my question 022 about film development. Last year, during the Finance Committee meetings, members and I asked about the same question. How come there are no extra points for films that talk of good stories of China? I asked about the number of films that promote positive thinking, and there is no such reply from the government. What do you think about films that talk about murdering or killing parents? Do you think they carry positive thinking?
Well, I don't think we should use taxpayers' money to produce films like these. The government should act as the gatekeeper here. The Ministry of Culture and Tourism in our country conducted a study, and they learnt about the subsidy scheme in France, UK and the US. And the subsidy schemes in these three countries are different. But to a certain extent, the government has a say in what kind of film should be produced under these schemes. In 2022, there is a film called Top Gun Maverick in the US, and it is about commanding the effort of the US Army. And the US government had a say about the content of the film. I think the CSTB should do the same. It's been 10 years since we set up the Relevant National Security Bureau, and we've just had the National Security Education Day. So films in Hong Kong should promote about national security and help cultivate a sense of national identity as well. So it is a question about the Film Development Fund. Thank you, Chairman. I think there is some misunderstanding here. We set up the Film Development Fund to promote the development of our film industry. If we can ensure good development of the industry, it is already a way of telling good stories of Hong Kong and China. In terms of the content of the film, well, people have various views. Say, there is a film and it's about a thief killing a lot of people, and the thief got caught and... Well, the first part of the film is about the thief killing many people. It can be viewed negatively. But in the second part of the film is about the thief being caught by the police, and it can be viewed positively here. So people have different views about different kinds of films. So should we make a calculation of how many minutes in a film which convey positive messages? Well, we impose a requirement. The applicants must comply with the laws of Hong Kong, including the national security law. The producer must not produce a film that would endanger national security. As for the details or content of the film, say, a character has a line that conveys a negative message, and someone rebutts that character in the film. How do we make of such a situation? So we should make give room for people to produce different films. If the entire film can tell good stories of Hong Kong and China, then such films definitely will deserve our support, and we should give our funding to such films. Next, Mr. Duncan Chu.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CSTB 062 about the National Games. Next year, Hong Kong will co-host the National Games, and eight games will be held in Hong Kong. And for the entire sports sector and for the entire community, this is very encouraging to see such large-scale games to be held in Hong Kong. The Games will bring in lots of visitors and tourists to Hong Kong, especially visitors would like to have experience of the city. The Tourism Board has assigned staff members to work in the Coordination Office. Understand that there is still time for the government to prepare for the Games. Say, for the Guangzhou Asian Games, before the Games, a lot of performances, tour guides about the venues were held. I believe before the National Games, there are a lot of events and activities we can hold to bring in tourists from different places, including the mainland to Hong Kong. Perhaps during the first half of next year, we can organize such events and activities. This will involve, for instance, approving visas for tourists and rolling out packages for tourists. How can we use the National Games to promote the tourism industry in Hong Kong? We can, through the National Games, encourage people to spend money. Can you make a relevant announcement in advance? So preparatory work about the National Games, how much can you disclose?
On the 11th of April, the Organizing Committee for the National Games were officially formed in Guangzhou. Say, we will have the opening ceremony and the ending ceremony, and we have already set the dates for these two ceremonies. And now we are focusing on organizing the Games. We have to make sure that we have the relevant venues. We have to tell the relevant committees the details of the venues. In terms of how we will promote the National Games and how we can make use of the Games to support the local tourism industry, this will be a focus of our work for sure. For now, I don't have a very detailed plan that I can disclose to members. However, I can invite our colleague from the Coordination Office to tell you more.
Mr. Young? Thank you. As the Secretary pointed out, last week, it's been confirmed the events that will be held in Hong Kong and also the opening and closing date of the Games. But then we will need to talk to the General Administration of Sports of China and the Organizing Committees on the various other arrangements. Now, there are four parties involved in publicity and promotion. And in Hong Kong, we're going to stage our own promotional activities. The Coordination Office now having interdepartmental discussion will make announcements as appropriate. Now, we're going to recruit volunteers because we want to involve more people in the Games. And then for audience of the Games or for volunteers, they will all feel that they are part of the National Games. So this is something we're going to promote a lot in the coming year. Okay, so please do give us the details at the appropriate juncture. Mr. Michael Tian. 006, Night Vibes, Hong Kong. The government deployed much resources to promote a mega event economy. Every month, you're going to have a pyrotechnics show costing over a million dollars. For local mega events, well, we can also help to boost spending and give people a sense of happiness, so it's rather positive. Now, for Night Vibes, Hong Kong, it was, the ambience was good. It's like the Chinese New Year Fair. People, you know, but then the local residents says the three days not enough. Maybe you should stage more of the Night Vibes and ask them what they have in mind. They said, perhaps we could do it like the pyrotechnic show, you know, once a month. But then definitely that will be in the weekend because I'm in the retail trade. We know weekdays, usually, there's not so much business. And then the stores must all be different to have the surprise element. It's like with your pyrotechnic shows and drone shows. Each month, you have a different theme. It's the same thing. So that's what the public have suggested now. And then reply number 222. It says market survey. Now, I asked whether you have surveyed visitors who've been to Hong Kong or those who have not yet visited Hong Kong, but they are potential visitors. Have you done surveys on them? And you should ask them what tourism attractions they would like to see in Hong Kong, and that will bring them here. And you mentioned the exit interview. Well, I think if you want to be more proactive, you should focus more on potential visitors who have yet to come to Hong Kong. We don't know how many people know there is this place called Hong Kong. And do they know that Hong Kong is part of China? And do they know that if they go to China, they must also visit Hong Kong? And if they know all these facts, how come they're still not visiting Hong Kong? So you need to find the answers. This is the million-dollar answer you want. For example, I've always suggested race track in Sunny Bay. I see that all around the world, there's not a single place where within an hour of traveling from the international airport, someone could just drop off their wife and children at a hotel, and then they could come to watch the car races. And then he can then take his family to Macau for shows and other family events. There's nowhere else with such an appeal and possibility as in Hong Kong. So shouldn't you sell this to people? Now, we want to integrate into the Greater Bay Area. So Hong Kong plus Macau, definitely that's a part of the GBA, and it will be a very appealing itinerary. So that's why I have asked what sort of activities people want or events to be stationed near the airport. Because if people are able to take their plane, probably they have some spreading power. And then online, many offered, will offer the views like that. So would you consider such an online survey? You should identify potential visitors who have never come to Hong Kong. You should find out from them what will appeal to them. Well, he's taken three and a half minutes, but those are detailed suggestions. Please give a brief reply, Secretary. Well, I think the member is asking whether we will find out from potential visitors what they would like to come to Hong Kong for. So we'll talk to the Tourism Board because they are conducting various studies at different places. Next, Mr. Rock Chen.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my two questions 032. That's a mega event matching fund. Now, in the reply, the Bureau said that with subsidized events, they will only note the attendance, but then they won't collect the information on viewership, say, online or the hit rate and so on. Now, you know, the world has changed. Now, apart from attending an event physically, people may not be able to get tickets, and they may choose to watch the event online through various social media platforms. So in your future subsidy requirement, will you require the organizer to also take note of online viewership and hit rate and so on? So only then can we have a full picture of how many people actually attend the event. And then next, CSTB 283. Now, it's a climbing facilities. There are now 13 indoor and outdoor climbing facilities. And only those who've been trained or who hold certain certificates can use these facilities. And then the average usage rate is only 32% or 23% for the past two years, so it's not really satisfactory. So my question is, as you strike a balance between safety and the promotion of climbing activities, does the LCF have any measures to boost the usage rate of these climbing facilities and encourage more to take part in the sport?
Secretary, I'll ask the Director of Leisure and Cultural Services to answer the first question later. And on the earmark, earmark events, now we have, we are now doing review on several major subsidy schemes. Maybe in future, organizers could report attendance figures and other useful information to us. And I'll ask the Director of Leisure and Cultural Services to take the second question. Director, please.
Thank you. For climbing activities, sports of climbing, there is need for people to be trained first to make sure it's safe. So that's why participants are required to have had training before they can use our facilities. But of course, we want to encourage more to take up sports climbing, so we'll be arranging more training classes. And then more will become trained and eligible to use the facilities. Now, I've actually taken part in such events. Now, we know there are safety harnesses people can use overseas. Even though I was not trained, I didn't have a certificate, I was able to take part in climbing activities overseas because there's a safety harness. So in Hong Kong, if you want people to be trained first, it's difficult. Maybe rather, you should consider providing safety devices.
Next, Mr. Benson Look. Thank you.
059, CSTB 059. Now, paragraph 66 of the budget says that we want to promote activities for young people. For example, mountain climbing, stargazing and so on, hiking and so on. Now, so hiking, cycling or skateboarding, do you have any information on the various activities? Now, here we're not talking about any sensitive information, just talking about the actual implementation. In the reply to my question, you know, for, we don't even see terms like hiking, skateboarding and so on in the reply. So it seems that you're not really answering my question. I'm rather disappointed. I'm just asking what you're doing to promote these various activities, and I see no mention there. And then I note the cycling sector and hiking sectors well, and they have high expectations of the SL government. They want the government to promote, say, hiking and cycling trails and hiking trails, cycling tracks in Hong Kong. And there are a few major organizers in Hong Kong of these activities, but then they have not been approached by the SL government. So how are you going to promote these spots?
So I have three questions. Um hiking, cycling, stand-up, paddle boarding, trail running, skargazing, these are mentioned specifically. So why these five activities, is there any reason for that? And then uh in the budget, there's um the term, for example. So are you just citing examples, are you actually eyeing these five activities? You want to promote these five activities. So if that's the case, um what do you want the reference sectors to do to support your work? And then in now, uh question four, uh the in part uh part four of my question, I asked whether there are any performance indicators. Maybe there could be a quarterly list of of events and activities and how many actually take part in these activities, that could be a form of K P I. In the main reply, it says that you cannot really assess in quantifiable terms. So what is the challenge there, why is that the case? Now, there are three questions, if you can't take the answer of all of them, please give written information afterwards. Secretary, now um we know that young people these days have different hobbies. They don't just go to to admire the scenery, but rather they want other activities. For example, hiking, cycling, stand-up, paddle boarding and so on, this um. So these are just examples and they show that the government is fully aware of the changes or change of preferences among young people. So these are the activities you want to promote to bring visitors from overseas, young visitors from overseas in particular. But of course, we're not just talking about these activities, other people may have different hobbies. And if visitors come here, maybe they just engage in one type of activity, will engage in different activities. So what we're trying to convey in the reply is that on the whole, we uh take seriously the promotion of different activities. But if, say, we just want, you ask us to focus just on stand-up ped- paddle boarding, well, it would be difficult for us. But rather, um this will be just one of the shred, uh the the items in our overall strategy in promoting activities, that's all. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lang. A C S T B three two six. Three two six. Uh children's play facilities. Now, the L sixty has already transformed some of the public play spaces and you have completed some of the projects, hundred and sixteen public play space transformation projects have been complete, uh have been launched. Uh but you don't uh um you don't have a timetable for all the projects, so it's there one. And then uh as you transform this public space, would you consider some adventure elements? And you know, um with water elements, sand elements, because in Macau they have some similar facilities that are very popular. And if certain play facilities are popular, with a lot of people using them, that means there'll be more wear and tear, requiring repair and maintenance. So would it make it more difficult to maintain the popular facilities? And will you have dedicated teams to follow up on the repair maintenance of these facilities? And then C S T B one seven one. Uh sports um research subsidy scheme. Now, uh it mentions here, you, uh the government has funded some twenty grade A pro- tier A projects. So will you just um support tier A projects? Or is it the case that there are no applications on other tiers of projects? So this is about a sports science and research funding scheme. And then for sports athletes and Hong Kong Sports Institute, now you say you're going to send invitation to um tertiary institutes, sports institutes and so on. Uh but do you take the initiative to approach, say, tertiary institutes or other organizations to work with them on the promotion of sports science and research?
One question about children's play equipment and the other one about the science and research fund. On promoting sports science, we have wrote out some schemes. We wrote out a three hundred million subsidy scheme with the Hong Kong Jockey Club. A lot of the times, the funding scheme was for the post-secondary or tertiary institutions for researchers. Well, there isn't a limit to what kind of research or projects we should carry out and what kind we should not do. We will look at the trend and we'll look at the effectiveness of the projects to make a decision. The other question about children's equipment and play facilities, Director, please. On the hundred and sixteen projects which have already commenced, depending on whether they are small parks or large playgrounds, we believe that within one to three years' time, depending on the size of the facilities, we'll be able to be, we'll be able to complete them. Our original target was a hundred and seventy. For the rest of the projects, we will commence them by next year. Before we roll out the projects, we consult the public about these projects, we engage organizations that um are specialized in children's play equipment to see what kind of facilities parents or children want. We try to satisfy the needs of the public when we uh carry out the design. We will also try to, as early as possible, order parts and components to help with the repair and maintenance work of the facilities. If you have additional information, please provide them to Mr. Leng after the meeting, thank you. Mister Kenneth Fok, I'd like to follow up on the question asked by Doctor Soo, the Elite Athletes I T Resource Center. Well, outside the establishment, we had sixteen stationed staff at the center that helped with the strength and conditioning of staff as well as psychology of athletes. We have reserved eighteen quota for athletes for the Paris Olympic Games. My question is about C S T B oh six six, about the setting up of the new agency, that is the Cultural and Creative Industries Development Agency. Well, we've been talking about the development of creative industries in Hong Kong. I hope the new development agency will help promote creative industries in Hong Kong and it will do something different uh compared to Create Hong Kong. According to the indicators, in terms of number of participants, number of talents to be cultivated, as well as the number of awards will be used as indicators to assess the work of the administration. We want to grow the industry as much as possible. I asked the Secretary whether it would learn from K O K of South Korea. It was set up in two oh oh nine and K O K has been doing a great job. If you look at the indicator set by K O K, it's very clear, by twenty twenty-three, they want to spend certain money on certain projects and they have very clear indicators on how they finance their projects. They also have clear indicators on assessing the research outcomes. And they also offer support to startups. And they offer support to different enterprises to help promote the industry. They are trying to build an ecosystem, they're not just holding tours and expand their network. A P A and Design Hong Kong, they hold a lot of programs to nurture talents. Can you do more to expand the industry? Would you learn from the K O K experience, thank you. I think we're at this very different stage compared to K O K. We have now set up a new development agency to promote the creative industries in Hong Kong. This June, we will formally set up the agency. And afterwards, we will see how we can take forward our work by examining what direction we should take and then we will come up with K P I's. Mister Kenneth Fok mentioned about how South Korea tries to build an ecosystem for the industries. Well, my view is that by just looking at these K P I's, it's hard to know what exactly K O K does. We look at how we try to look for partners for enterprises. We try to bring members of the industry to different fair uh trade shows, for instance. So after the for- the agency is set up, we will set more concrete K P I's. Next, Mister Sunny Ten, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up my on my own question, the number is two one four, two one six, two one seven and two one eight. In terms of how we're going to promote Hong Kong Fashion Design Week, the government gave very good replies. And in its reply, it mentions that it will adopt an open attitude. Also, it mentions that it will try to bring our Hong Kong Fashion Design Week to the Belt and Road countries. My question is this, while we try to promote our role as a super connector, we need to work with different organizations and groups outside Hong Kong. So I would like to know the government's view on this. We want to hold mega events, so I want to know within Hong Kong, how the government and the Tourism Board is going to work with different agencies and organizations to stage mega events. The second question is about the Shamshe Po. The sector told me that um they appreciate how the government put in resources to build a Shamshe Po district as a design center. We see workshops that are popular among young people in Hong Kong. We hope that the Shamshe Po fashion design base can tie in with the Hong Kong Design uh Fashion Design Week and we can roll out um in the tourism products based on this. On the um Hong Kong Fashion Design Week, currently, we have many different kinds of fashion shows and designs in Hong Kong. There are lots of events and activities held by the sector. We need to first consolidate all these different types of events and activities. And next up, as an East meets West cultural center, we want to promote the Hong Kong Fashion Design Week as an international event. We want to set up a network. Say, for instance, we want to invite international fashion designers to come attend our events. Can we, for instance, every year, we work with uh different countries to hold different events? We also want to work with different mainland cities because there are uh different fashion design events in the mainland as well. Hong Kong is the East meets West center for international cultural exchange, we're also a super connector. We want to bring together people from the fashion design industry, from the mainland and Hong Kong. For any fashion designs that can help promote Chinese culture, we want to display them to the world. So we will continue to look for partners in the fashion design industry from both the mainland and other places in the world. As for the Shamshe Po design and fashion base, it's going to be a new landmark. We hope to create synergy with the fashion base. We hope to bring about the uh local tourism industry development. Next, Mister Scott Lern, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on oh two six about Temple Street. I appreciate the administration and the Tourism Board for organizing the Temple Street Night Market, which attracted lots of visitors. I talked to operators of some old and traditional shops and they did say that they saw more footfall. But how can we continue to bring in visitors and tourists to the district? How can we um boost economy through bringing in tourists? Apart from continuing to promote Temple Street, apart from the uh from Jordan Street to Nanking Street, there is also a street with fortune tellers. How can we consolidate all these tourist spots? Can we uh work with local merchants to revitalize the local market and showcase the characteristics of the entire neighborhood and district? And apart from Temple Street, around Temple Street, there are lots of um photo checking spots. For instance, Canton Street is not only famous for jade, it's also famous for coffee shops nowadays. And next to Canton Street or nearby, we have the Yamate Police Station. Again, it's a very popular uh checking spots for tourists. How can we create an itinerary for tourists? For instance, after they um appreciate the jade um accessories and after having coffee, they can go to visit Yamate Police Station and at night they can visit the Temple Street Night Market. Does the Tourism Board have any thoughts in this regard, any plans, please? So about Temple Street Night Market, thank you, Chairman. I will invite the Tourism Board to tell members about how it's going to promote the development of Temple Street. We have done a lot of work because we want to bring in footfall. We want more people to visit Temple Street. Now, after attracting people to go to Temple Street, how can we encourage them to spend money? Well, this is not just a decision made by the government. People from the business sector should, based on the um circumstances of our society, contribute ideas. District Officers does a lot of coordinating work in the district. In promoting tourism, we work with different sectors and parties. I will ask Mister Dane Chang to tell you more. Starting from last December, we have been promoting Temple Street. We are quite happy with the results, we're trying to revitalize the entire district. Now, for the second phase, we have almost completed the second stage. So starting from tomorrow, we'll be able to start promoting for the second phase, all the way from Temple Street to the part that sells dried seafood or dried goods. or dried goods. We want to um show our appeal to tourists so that more visitors will go there. Apart from Night Vibes Campaign, um we also promoted a West Kowloon the year before the last. We want to through the entire West Kowloon, including Yaochimong District, boost tourism. We want to see how we can work with the different district councils to promote these events and boost economy. Thank you. Miss Doring Kong.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh my questions are on publicity, O O four and two three five. Questions raised by Mister Ronic Chen and Mister Paul Che. Now, in the reply, you said that you've invited KOLs to help with promotion. Uh some thirty three hundred thirty three short videos were produced. So how many KOLs were there? Where do they come from? Where did they come from? Um because I want to see uh which places are we um doing publicity? Uh would they be would they be the best for Hong Kong? And now you say you can't tell how much uh you uh have spent on this. You say it's not possible to quantify the spending. Well, in the past few days, uh this are the words I seen read the most. That is that you have not kept information or um the expenditure could not be quantified. So it's not just for this bureau. So this is a special uh finance committee. If um everything cannot be quantified, then what is the purpose of having these meetings? So can you tell us how many KOLs there are from how many places? Uh there are three hundred and thirty odd people during the thirty thirty odd videos or thirty people doing all the videos. The next one is uh O six eight, a question raised by Mister uh Kenneth Fok. Uh you say Hong Kong Moments, Hong Kong's Moments, you've um produced these videos. I I've looked at, read, I watched all of them. Uh but there are not no themes, uh Hong Kong, the Moon City Jungle. And for that one minute, what what is it? What is about the rooftops of Hong Kong? That's all there are. Yes, it's very nicely produced, but then what is the message you're trying to convey? So my um suggestion is that there has to be a theme with the video series that I've uh watched a uh website through Stone. And it covers videos produced in ten countries during the pandemic. These are the best videos. And all these videos are really touching and they all have a theme. So um uh for in twenty twenty four, we want to promote Hong Kong. What are the themes? And you say it's not possible to quantify the um effectiveness of publicity, but at least tell us what you want to achieve. We're talking about one billion dollars in the marketing. If you can't quantify your work, at least tell us what you want to achieve. And another, um you know, um suggestion, you know, on Xiao Hong Shu, they have videos that are really nicely produced with music and and so on. It is very touching. Uh it's about Hong Kong. So can you do a competition for people to produce such videos? I'm sure you have, there were plenty of good ideas. So these are actually suggestions of Doc uh Miss Doring Kong, so you could consider them, okay? I'll ask the uh Mister Chang to give a quick reply, but on the whole, we welcome the suggestions from Miss Doring Kong. We will certainly consider all of them carefully. Executive Director of the TB. Anything from you? For the production of short videos, um well, last year, uh it was the um re- resumption of normalcy. So that's mostly um videos on Hello, Hong Kong. There are over three hundred short videos that includes the videos that we funded. At the same time, we've also asked KOLs to help produce the videos. So we look at different markets and their preferences. Uh for the first markets we worked on, they were the mainland and Southeast Asian markets. So on our website, you may not be able to see all the videos um that are actually shown uh in different places locally. Uh we also do um advertisement to post those videos. Uh for example, three sixty City Jungle, that was produced um uh earlier on. Then it's used to using the technique of the three sixty panoramic um technique. Uh you mentioned Xiao Hong Shu. Last week, we signed a strategic partnership agreement in Qianzhou. Um so I think we're the first outside of mainland to sign the agreement with them. We've actually worked with them for a few years. The Xiao Hong Shu platform is for supporting um you know um um ordinary people. And so there's no funding. Instead, we invite KOLs to come to Hong Kong and then it's up to them to produce the videos they want. Thank you. Next, Mister Perry Yu. I'd like to follow up on my own question. Reply number two one five and two one three, uh two five one and two five three. Now, for the uh um twenty twenty two twenty three budget, that's this uh uh local heritage and culture incentive scheme, and then it's really enhanced, and that's a characteristic local tool incentive scheme. Uh these are very good schemes. Um during the pandemic and after the resumption of travel, normal travel, these schemes have helped to give support to the trades. At the same time, um these schemes encourage the trade to keep developing new products to re- to reinvigorate the tourism market. Now recently, there's um a competition on um innovative in-depth tourism itineraries and over one hundred travel agents took part, and they were very creative um uh projects and and that and and many of them have won awards. Now, my uh there's not much funds left in the scheme, but as at the end of February. The scheme is supposed to last for three years. That means at least until next year. So has the bureau considered giving the schemes more resources so they could be implemented for three years, which your which is your regional target? And two five three, reply number two five three. The Tourism Board has been um um giving support, subsidizing um the sector to attend um related um major exhibitions and and events. I wonder if the bureau will consider um some ideas. Uh this year, you're going to spend another one hundred million dollars on promoting mega events. So would you consider giving some resources to the sector? So they could go out of Hong Kong uh to promote Hong Kong. You know, because um the the tourism sector could uh approach the counterparts overseas. Um they could in the source markets. Now for outbound and travel agents, uh they can connect with the counterparts in the various source markets. That means uh um that there could be a promotion of cooperation. In the end, there'll be more visitors uh um going between the two places. So um well, uh can you be brief? Because those are mostly suggestions. We've set aside um some in the budget, hoping that the scheme uh it will support the two schemes for three years, but then this response been overwhelming, so um more money has been spent quicker than uh we have planned. Now, when there's some sources, we do not have any plan at the moment to extend the scheme. Um so but well, of course, we could always see, but for now, we have no plan to extend the scheme. For the one hundred million dollars, that's for promoting mega events. If we use that money instead to uh subsidize the tourism sector to attend overseas conferences or events, well, it may not be appropriate. Now, um with the available resources at the appropriate time, uh then we may uh subsidize the tourism sector to attend conferences overseas. Thank you. Miss Adrian Ho, I have a number of questions. First, uh reply number three oh five, um some subvention to NSA. I'm all for government subvention for NSA to develop various sports. But then in the reply, it says that in the past five years, government has been increasing subvention to NSA. There's no decrease at all. So are you monitoring how the INSA is using the subvention to um train new blood and promote their sports? For example, the Weightlifting Association. In twenty twenty one, that's um uh sum of four hundred and forty thousand dollars spent for international events outside held outside Hong Kong. But at the time, that was the pandemic. There were no athletes attending any international um competitions. So have you tried to confirm with the uh the NSA uh whether the spending is justified now? I've asked a question and I expect the reply to be the way it is from the government, but still, uh we are talking about giving public money to subvention NSA, so you should step up monitoring and supervision on them to make sure public money is properly spent. Now, um this, we we here, we're talking about Weightlifting Association. Uh so of course, it engages in weightlifting sports. In the past four years, the the association never held any weightlifting um events, uh competition. And uh instead, it uh held events on something else. So uh they're just focusing on one particular spot, but not trying to nurture um talents for um weightlifting. That's my question. Now, the uh Guilty Conscience, um has just won the Golden Award. The government gave some eight hundred eighty million dollars, uh eight point eight million dollars to this film. And the the box office doing really well in Hong Kong is exceeded one hundred million dollars. So for uh uh um films that do well, do you work out the return rate? Yeah, because it's funded by the Film Development Fund. And if a film, that's where the box office will that money goes to go to promoting the further development of the film industry. I have another question. Uh C uh O eight four, Chubby Hearts. On the fourth of March, I wrote to the bureau. I want to ask about the actual economic benefits of the Chubby Hearts event and um uh to Hong Kong and how how much um how many people actually attended the event. So please give me a reply soon. Well, the the um you've spent more than three and a half minutes. There's limited time, so please just give a very brief reply, Secretary. For NSA's, um now, uh we we do monitor the use of public funds by NSA. I won't talk about individual cases. Um say for uh and we are we are asking the NSA do review on this internal governance. As for the promotion of individual events, uh we and the NSA will look at that. As for the Film Development Fund, it's to uh allow films to be produced. And it's to help um uh the sector to find investors. Some films make money, some don't. Uh we don't set a target as to how much money should be made for each film. Of course, if uh film is money-making, it's good. The money will go back to the treasury. It won't be used again for film development. The third question about Chubby Hearts. Now, if we uh we uh with the information, we will reply to you as soon as possible. And estimates that there were seven hundred thirty people um participating in the event. And we'll provide you with the other information when it's available. Thank you.
Doctor Chau Man Kong, thank you, Chairman. Let me first comment the work of the administration, number two nine six. According to LCSD, well, it gives a very good answer. I asked a very short question, but they gave me three to four pages of answer, but the second question is not answered at all. I asked you what kind of intangible cultural heritage uh projects are there? And you mentioned about a show that celebrates the um seventy fifth anniversary of the PRC. Well, weeks ago, um the Economic Development Panel met with the Tourism Board and we talked about um self-media. The Tourism Board signed a strategic partnership agreement with Xiao Hong Shu. I understand that the HYAB Home and Youth Affairs Bureau also has been paying attention to the money spent on social media platforms, and they spent two million dollars. I want to know the relevant expenditures on self-media. My next question is about number two oh six. And a coordination group is set up for mega events, but we lack the relevant details. I checked the minutes of the first meeting convened by the Coordination Group. According to the minutes, RTHK is going to do a show. But how much viewership can we attract um through RTHK? Can we make use of self-media as well here? Thank you. Three questions. On the last question, the Mega Events Coordination Group strives to attract different mega events to be staged in Hong Kong. And we try to ensure smooth implementation of all these events. The one hundred million dollars will be spent in three years' time. Well, we have um well, the this financial year has just started, so we haven't got the money yet. The promotional efforts will be um continued. On intangible cultural heritage uh projects, well, there is collaboration between us and the GBA. We haven't earmarked a sum of money dedicated to intangible curi- heritage um project with the GBA. Every year, we dedicate a sum of money for this purpose. It could be uh spent on a show, a performance, or an exchange program. We want to ensure that we can make use of the fund we have in a flexible way. As we promote national education, it doesn't matter whether it is an intangible cultural heritage project or not. We didn't give an example in our reply, but we carry out this kind of programs and projects regularly. That's the point that we want to bring out. Miss Connie Lam will be the next to speak. Afterwards, Mister Vincent Chang and Mister Robert Lee may be able to speak. And then we'll wrap up after Mister Vincent Chang and Mister Robert Lee. Miss Connie Lam, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on CSTB O one one, a question put by Miss Rebecca Chan. According to the Hong Kong According to the Hong Kong Tourism Board, it will promote Hong Kong's tourism appeal through various means. This includes inviting K O Ls key opinion leaders to help promote Hong Kong. How much money has the Tourism Board spent to invite K O Ls to promote Hong Kong? Do you have statistics um on how many fans these K O Ls have and how well-known these K O Ls are? Which K O Ls are you going to invite and how much money do you think you will spend? Last week, you've signed a strategic partnership agreement with Xiao Hong Shu. Any fund allocation to this um partnership project? Well, I'm also on Xiao Hong Shu and I uh film short videos to promote Sha Tin. And the cultural characteristics in the district. Secretary, I'd like to invite Mr. Dane Chang to um tell you more. Mr. Chang, please. This is also responding to Ms. Kong's question about why we can't quantify our, um, what we have accomplished. We invite K O Ls to produce short videos. We first look at um which market we target and what kind of um A O Ls there are in the, in the um targeted market. In C S T B number one, four, six, we mentioned that there are a number of K O Ls. For instance, there is one with um, over three thousand followers. So based on the themes, we invite different K O Ls. For instance, if we want to promote art Basel, then we invite K O Ls engaged in arts and culture. For instance, if we want to promote Rugby Sevens, we want to invite those that have to do with sports to help promote the event. On the other hand, when we invite K O Ls to help us, we look at a few things. For instance, last May, we invited eighty-eight Xiao Hong Shu bloggers to come to Hong Kong. And we were responsible for the entire trip. Someone sponsored their air tickets and someone sponsored their hotel accommodation, for, for instance. And these bloggers, they produce films online to help promote Hong Kong. We also worked with an artist from Japan. That artist came to Hong Kong for a function. And we therefore talked to that artist and asked him to help promote Hong Kong. This year, we'll continue to carry on with such effort. We think that we can, through K O Ls, tell good stories of Hong Kong. Apart from K O Ls, we also work with artists, stars, and different media platforms to help tell good stories of Hong Kong. On the point about Xiao Hong Shu, we signed an agreement with Xiao Hong Shu. With a view to telling good stories of Hong Kong. Xiao Hong Shu thinks that they are in some ways connected to Hong Kong. We haven't had any concrete plans with Xiao Hong Shu yet, but in the coming year, we'll step up our promotional efforts for sure. Chairman, a quick question. I hope that we can invite local K O Ls to help promote local events. That's a very clear comment. Please take note of it. Three minutes will be given to the following members. Mr. Vincent Chang, please. My question is about oh, four, six. But before that, I'd like to talk about the Film Development Fund. Some other members asked about the Film Development Fund. The. Fund has offered a lot of help to the local film industry over the past few years. And the fund allows members of the industry to go global. I also watched the film, The Time Still Turns the Page. I think the film reminds people not to um mistreat our children. I want to ask about urban sports. In the Policy Address twenty twenty-two, urban sports were mentioned. And early last year, the government mentioned about renovating Tongchung Market. A Kunchung Market. Seen um people engaging in sport climbing and breakdancing and so on. But we haven't seen any progress with the Kunchung Market project. Can you tell us about the progress? Well, the market is left idle there now. There are no people going to the market. And you keep telling us that we lack space in Hong Kong. Can you tell us the progress about the Kunchung Market project, please, Secretary? We are working at full steam on the project. I'll invite Director to tell you more. Director, please. On Kunchung Market, last year. We consulted the Archimong District Council on the uh development scope. Now, the Architectural Services Department on the redevelopment is conducting a feasibility study. And then it will, based on the um public works mechanism, carry on with the works. Well, we have to first conduct a feasibility study to see whether the project is feasible. We have to look at the scope of the works to determine the program and timeline. Please let us know the details when you have the information. Thank you. Mr. Robert Lee, thank you, Chairman. C S T B and the Tourism Board earlier at the panel reported us um to, about the work on how to attract tourists. My first question is about C S T B one, five, nine. There's mention about the pyrotechnic and drone shows. The government says it welcomes organizations or groups that are interested in approaching the administration. If you don't get a lot of feedback, does, is it because you are not doing enough promotion? That's my first question. Second, a lot of um Hong Kong people go to the mainland to spend money. Not many people stay in Hong Kong. We have to enhance our service quality. For restaurants that offer fine dining, for instance. We are seeing a lack of manpower and therefore, poor services. Well, rent is expensive as well. However, there are things that are offered for free. For instance, you can simply greet your customers and give them a warm smile to show your courtesy. There is mention that the Tourism Board will produce a reality show. To promote um tourism in Hong Kong. Also. There is a Q T S Merchant and Service Staff Award. I want to know how much money would be spent on the reality show and will you step up your promotional efforts? Will you? Give out cash awards, uh, rewards to those who are given the Outstanding Q T S Merchant and Service Staff Awards? Secretary, please give a brief response. On the courtesy campaign, this is what we're going to do um coming up. Your first question is about sponsorship for the pyrotechnic and drone shows, right? Well, some people approached us, but we haven't got any solid ideas yet. Uh, Mr. Dane Chang may be able to give you more information. Let me first invite a Commissioner for Tourism to speak. Commissioner. Well, member mentioned about the reality show. We've already started um working on the show with the T V broadcaster. On the Outstanding Q T S Merchant and Service Staff Award, the Tourism Board. Is now mapping out the details. Mr. Dane Chang may be able to elaborate later. The Tourism Board is. Going to um put up T V ads. To. Be a good host. This is a reminder for the industry. Mr. Ma from Quok, two minutes. Mr. Ma, please.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to speak. I'd like to follow up on. Sorry.
Well, sorry, I thought we were going to finish, so need some time. Yes, I just want to allow you the opportunity to, to speak. Thank you. Uh, C S T B one, nine, oh, is my own question. Is a signature performing arts scheme, event scheme. Now, I support the scheme, of course, but for signature performance, it's not so much about the funds. But rather, is to make sure that there is a venue for long-run performance. That's the key. In the reply, the administration said it would give assistance on venue, but that's not the best approach. Uh, when I was at the West Kowloon Cultural um District Authority. I said that there should be a few venues for the, the arts, performing arts groups to stage long-run performances. Now, with, we have the C S T B, I hope you will consider this issue in the long run. Now, under the Signature Performing Arts Program Scheme, what are the criteria? In terms of selection? So which will you pick as signature performing arts program? That's important. Now, if a program is doing well, they don't, it probably doesn't need much funds from the government. But rather, it's a matter of identifying programs with potential, and then you will give them this opportunity. Yeah, so, so it's about identifying potential winners in a way. Thank you, Mr. Ma, for your question. It's a very important point. Uh, we would like to launch the scheme as soon as possible. On the art forms, uh, we don't have any restrictions, but we want it to be an original program. And then Mr. Ma pointed out an important issue. Apart from funds, the venue is important. So when the scheme is launched, we hope we'll be able to provide the performing arts groups with venue. That they can use for a certain period, so there will be longer-run performances. But as for how long, well, it's hard to, to um decide now. And then we, and, and more importantly, want these programs to go out of Hong Kong too. As for the selection, it will be in a form of a competition. It's not for us to select the programs. Uh, we'll set up a mechanism for um selecting these programs. I hope you'll pick um programs with potential, as Mr. Ma suggested. So that's the end of the session. Thank you. The bureau colleagues and members. Then tomorrow, the morning, the meeting will start at nine A M sharp. So that wraps up the session today. Thank you very much.